Regular meeting of the City Council of Temple City. The May 3, 2022, meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, ma'am?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist is absent.
Could we get a motion for...
I will make a motion to excuse Mayor Sternquist for good cause. She asked me to let everyone know that she is attending some training, actually, with our California JPIA and that she's working hard for all of us. So that's a good reason to be excused for night.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second, with no objections. So Mayor Sternquist is excused. Next, we have our invocation, and we are pleased to have Mr. Jerry Janbazian, the owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies located at 9136 East Les Tunas Drive in Temple City. He will be providing the invocation.
Let's all stand, please. Father, in the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for our Mayor Pro Tem, and for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them a sense of welfare and true need of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and that they may have joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in around our beloved city of Temple City. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for every mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning. Every project, every season, every life, nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Heavenly Father, we continue to pray for our world and all the turmoil that exists, especially for the people of Ukraine. We also lift up our armed forces that protect our freedoms. And in closing, Lord, I continue to pray for all those who help keep us safe, including our sheriffs at Temple Station and firefighters at Engine 47. We ask this all in your name and for your glory. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Janbazian. If everyone could remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to item five, ceremonial matters. It's my privilege to present a proclamation for Older American Month. And first, I'd like to read the proclamation, share with everyone tonight. Older Americans' Month: Communities of Strength, May 2022. Whereas the city of Temple City includes a growing number of older Americans who make countless contributions to our community every day, and whereas the city of Temple City is stronger when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to make their mark, and whereas the city of Temple City recognizes the importance of the physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being of its citizens, and whereas the city of Temple City can support our community members by promoting independence, inclusion, and participation, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and connecting people with opportunities to share their time, experience, and talents. And so now therefore I, William Mann, Mayor Pro Tem of Temple City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Older Americans' Month. I urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential members of our community. And today, we also have the pleasure of having Mrs. Carol Rodenbacher, who is a member of our Committee on Aging, to accept the proclamation certificate. So, Ms. Rodenbacher, if you could come up so that we may present this to you, and if I could ask the City Council to maybe join us for a quick photo. I do want to say, just a quick comment. I do appreciate every one of our members on the Committee on Aging. I remember prior to the pandemic had attended several of their meetings. They've contributed a lot immensely to the many studies and reports that we have had on that committee. So look forward to seeing more to come from that committee in the future. Next, we have a Farmers Market Update, and we have the pleasure of having Gretchen Sterling and Selena Gromon, who are the Temple City Farmers Market Managers, to provide an update.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Pro Tem and wonderful citizens of Temple City. We've been with the Temple City Market now for 13 years.
Eleven.
Eleven years, I'm sorry. We opened in 13. We want to, we have some slides to show you, but one of the things I want to tell you and show you is the biggest reason that I became involved in farmers markets was farmers were not allowed to sell things that weren't the same size, grade, and in grocery stores. So they had nothing that they could do with the product that you're seeing come around. We brought cherries for you to see tonight. They come in doubles, they have spurs, they have, they're misshapen. Those were not the items that were allowed to be sold in a store. Therefore, and farmers were not allowed to sell off of their property unless it conformed to size, grade, and packaging. So this is why we have farmers markets. It's the same quality inside and out as everything else, but it doesn't have the look that the commissions want. So this is why we're here, and this is why I've committed 40 years plus to farmers markets. There was supposed to be a video that played. Whoops. Worked really hard on that. Is it going to go? Maybe. No. Okay. Anyway. Well, back in 2010, I was approached by then-city manager Jose Polito to open up dialogue on a farmers market for Temple City. So we've been successful in doing that. We've brought various farmers from all over the state. Some of you obviously have been to the market. We have some special council people who, for years, have come and joined us, you know, Fernando and Tom Chavez, and sometimes even Mayor Sternquist has arrived at our door and walked out with armloads of wonderful things to take home to the family. I know that Fernando used to come and get flowers regularly to take home for Sunday morning breakfast or brunch.
I'm sure he took those home, but we know he wants them.
He told me it was for his daughters. So, you know, I can only go by what you tell me. We lost power in the big storm in 2012, and that closed us down for a little while because the parking lot was needed. But we came back, we've come back strong, and we're a very essential part of the community. And our efforts were in no small part undone by anything we could have asked for Brian Cook and Brian Arizome and the staff. Whenever we ask something, they come through and take care of whatever the problem is for us, and we really appreciate the, especially the staff that comes on Sunday morning early when most people want to be home in bed, they switch off. We've got Sio, Leo, John, Adrian, and Josh that come through on different weeks, and we really appreciate, because, you know, we're out there, rain or shine. Our customers know we're going to be there, and during the pandemic, we had people staying and standing in line for, you know, 20 minutes, 30 minutes before we even opened our door because the health department required entry times being done. And since the end of that, we're very glad to be over that part of it, and people are able to come now. They don't line up at 7 o'clock in the morning when we opened at 7:30. In Pasadena, they were lining up at 5:15, and we opened at 7:30. But a very dedicated group of customers, a very dedicated group of farmers participate in your specific market, and every one of them brings different things from different parts of the state. The biggest issue that we have is a quarantine issue for a particular pest, Asian Citrus cillus. If the agriculture department goes around and sees people with citrus, they knock on their door and tell them you can't do anything with the leaves because the leaves is the transmitter of the issue. Farmers are not allowed to bring leaves to the market because they're bringing product in from outside, and if they have leaves, then they can't even take the leaves home. So it's a very serious problem. We're trying to keep it from going farther up the state. Our goal is to support small farmers and local artisans who are making food from, that they usually purchase from the farmers market, in order to do fruits, vegetables, because farmers can only sell through farmers markets or commercial packing houses. If the packing house or the distributor doesn't get it sold, they're going to lose money. By coming and selling it directly to our customers, they get to keep that money. They also get to pay a higher price for gasoline. Now, they pay a higher price for water. One of our farmers' well went out. It was an 18-month wait to get a new well. He finally found someone who could fix his well, but in the meantime, he spent three weeks sending $25 a gallon for water for sour leaf, which takes a lot of water, I'm They have some real heavy issues, as the rest of us do, but not only do they work all day and farm, but they pack it, they put it in the truck, and they leave home at 2 in the morning to be here on Sunday morning. And so we really appreciate them. Lots of information up there. This is the one Ramon cares about. This is the requirements for the farmers market. You'd ask us to tell you what a certified farmers market involves. We have health fees, we have agriculture fees, we have inspections quarterly by the agriculture department, we have the liability insurance, we have managers groups. We have to keep the load sheets that the farmers fill out for us each week telling us how much they brought because they're only allowed to sell what they grow, and the county goes around and makes sure that they're not selling more than they can produce because we want to make sure that that chain of product is stable so that you know who's buying your food and who is growing your food for you. We have a group of farmers market managers that we meet with regularly, also online for the last two years. But the fact that we talk about who's growing what, what product do we need, we're always looking for ways to help get more farmers to grow items that customers want. You know, if someone comes up to Mr. Vu here in the parking lot and says, "Do you grow charamoya?" Well, no, I don't grow charamoya, but I grow jujubes, and he bought from our plant person 1,200 trees? Thirty trees, which totaled $1,500. Thirty trees of jujubes. Because he lost in that three weeks of having to buy water his 30-year-old jujube trees. Farm life, hard life. And COVID didn't help. No. We survived, as most businesses tried to survive. We adapted, we did whatever we could to keep farmers farming and customers safe. It worked, we're still here, and we appreciate everyone's efforts, particularly our customers who were very willing to stand in line and wait, and then to come into the market, and then stand in line for the individual farmers to wait for them to be helped individually. We're still doing that kind of thing. We're always looking for new products, we're always looking for folks who can come and enjoy the market. We're also looking for some community group that wants to do a really good thing and help other people financially in a very minor way. We do an EBT program, which is CalFresh, and some markets have a market match program. Temple City does not. The organization that I work with, Hunger Action Los Angeles, would like to expand, but they don't have funds to help us. And what it is, is a, the customer uses up to $10 of their CalFresh or whatever the number we can choose, and then we give them an additional match of that number, if it's $5, for $5 of additional money to be used for fruits and vegetables, only at this market. It helps the farmers, it helps the customers, and if you have any groups of people who would like to help fund this, please send them our way. It's a great program for everyone involved, particularly, the school districts were giving out the CalFresh card for every student because they weren't giving out the lunch programs. The PEBT card can also be used at the farmers markets. So we're not going anywhere. We're here, we love the community. Selena graduated from Temple City High School, so we've got, as she says a long time ago, but not so long. I'm still in the parking lot at Pasadena High School on Saturday mornings, and I graduated in 1965. So, you know, it's all relative. But two years ago, we worked with the Camellia Festival, and three years ago, when they had their last festival, we worked it out so that we could be there when they were there. And because it's not in February this year, everything changes a little, we hope we can work it out so that we can also be there. Cherries have just come into season, stone fruit is coming, and we would hate to miss that opportunity to not be there. But we appreciate everything the city has done in keeping us, keeping our farmers working and your citizens healthy. So if you have questions, we're here to answer them.
Great. Thank you. Does Council have any questions?
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. First of all, I want to thank Selena and Gretchen for being here. It's good to see you guys.
It's not a Sunday morning, yeah.
No, I know, huh?
I look a little different.
You do. At first, I didn't recognize you. Wow.
She's got lots of hair.
It's the hair. I still remember when I first started coming to the market, Jane and I would ride our bikes, and Selena had to always remind me very nicely to not ride my bike into the market, which I tend to forget, but thank you for that. And I can remember Fernando, how many years ago, we started thinking about this, and we were going around looking at other markets, and then we were going to get this started. And I know Fernando was the driving force behind that, and it's hard to believe it's been that long already.
Actually, it was my oldest daughter who got me thinking about it.
Well, you can take credit for it, though.
Of course I can.
Yeah. Well, I will tell you that I believed in it strong enough that it would work. When Mr. Polito first talked to me about it, I said, "Ordinarily, I ask you to front the monies for the insurance, the certificates for the agriculture and the health department, but I know that this market will work, and I know that it needs to be at City Hall. It does not need to be somewhere else in the city." And I paid the first year's fees and got that back over the first year.
Well, it has been a success, there's no question about that. You know a question I have, whatever happened to homeboys? Did they just decide they didn't want to come?
They're not doing, selling at markets.
Oh, okay.
They pulled their farmers market program.
Because they were very popular.
It got really expensive to insure set drivers, unfortunately.
That's too bad. That's too bad, but...
Yeah, they were doing a food program, too, with homegirls, and that stopped.
Yeah.
So now, if you want to, you have to go to their...
Last question. So have you reached out to the Camellia Festival regarding that?
Yes, Don stopped by on Sunday.
Okay, well, hopefully you guys can work that out.
As of right now, I'm 80% sure we will be there, maybe with a modified hour of closing at noon instead of 12:30, as of right now, because I told her, "We'll set up inside here. Just give me a space, and my kids will work around whatever we have to work around." And she goes, "Oh, you're a different type of carnival, not a carnival, farmers market." She goes, "You are correct."
She's very easy to work with, and if you have any other issues, certainly you can talk to our city manager, I'm sure, and Brian would be glad to facilitate or do what we can to accommodate that. So, thank you.
Well, we appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for the updates.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have item number six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The City Council now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the City Council is highlighted on the first page of this packet. We do have a speaker request form, Mr. Steve Stafford.
Mayor Pro Tempur, ma'am, members of council. When this health crisis broke, they did it wrong. There were things they could have done, like they did with me, because I got rheumatoid arthritis, they used monoclonal immunity cells on me to make sure that I would stay immune to it. And they did this on a lot of people. They took cells from me through a tube of blood. You can help three people. I helped approximately 15 people get through the coronavirus. One was an unconscious six-year-old. He was in a coma. Two weeks later, after I gave him some of my genetics, he was running around in his hospital room. They had a lady that had two diseases. They used my genetics again to cure both diseases, the coronavirus and sickle cell. And they've already come as far as curing sickle cell, doing this 100%. They're close to what I have, rheumatoid arthritis. I inherited the immunity from my mother because she had polio and polio starches, the coronavirus. They've known about the coronavirus for at least 100 years, and the evidence is sitting there. If you go to coroner's office where death certificates are, you can see my mom's mom's certificate. She died before I was born. It says pneumonia/coronavirus, 1947. They were giving coronavirus shots to dogs and cats in the '70s and the '80s, and even up until the '90s and somewhat now, they've cut back on it. But it would have been more reasonable not to shut the economy down and do what they did and start using what they have through cloning genetics and using that to help a family. You can't do it with shots and waiting and shutting down the economy. We're now having the backlash of that. I couldn't think of a better way to help people by donating some of my immunity, and it's shown that it worked with every person. And they're doing that now at CAC Medical Center at USC, and they're studying out other diseases like mine to cure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to address the Council at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public comments. Next, we have the Consent Calendar Items. Consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Hold on, before we do that, I understand in discussions with our city manager, we like to table item 7B.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, with Mayor Sternquist's excused absence, I'd like to pull that if we...
Yeah, we like to reserve that for Mayor Sternquist to do when she returns.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, so I'll revise my motion to approve the consent calendar and pull item B for further consideration at a next meeting.
I'll second that, too.
All right, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, ma'am?
Yes. Consent calendar has been approved. Next, we move on to our public hearing, 8A, Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance Number 22-1060, Series B Code Amendments of Title IX Zoning Regulations, Chapter 1 of the Zoning Code. Tonight, we have our Community Development Director, Mr. Reimers.
And then, Mayor Pro Tem, you, ma'am, if I may, real quick. This is brought before you tonight. The description that's in the agenda doesn't completely capture what's there, actually. It should have been a little bit broader description. That was my fault. I apologize for that mistake. Community Development Director Reimers will go over the comprehensive approach to the code amendments that are being brought forward to you today. This is a requirement, or this is something that the general plan, which we adopted several years ago, was one of the... was one of the action items that we would, on a yearly basis, come back to you as the council and the planning commission before you with some, both technical changes and other changes that, as we've gone through the revised zoning code as well, needed updates or changes to. And our community development director, Mr. Reimers, will go over those, I think over 20, changes and adjustments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protemper Man, real quickly, as a point of question on this before we get started.
Sure.
Is there somewhere on here that we have these slideshows? Because I think, I thought we used to be provided with the slideshows before, so we could see them on our computer.
It's in your Dropbox.
Is it in the file? Okay, so it must be hiding somewhere, because it's not on the agenda. I have the agenda, and I have the written report. So is this slideshow somewhere else?
It should be right underneath it.
It should be underneath it?
8.5 presentation.
It would be in your Dropbox.
So it's the back.
Did you guys see it?
Yeah.
Oh, I see it, okay.
It's attachments.
You've got to go through 100 pages before you can get to it, I guess that's. All right. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right, Mr. Reimers.
Good evening, council. Yes, before you tonight is a very comprehensive look at some changes that we need, that where the staff is proposing that be made to the zoning code. So we've categorized these into a few different categories to help drive the discussion. But because it's a serious ordinance update, it's kind of a potpourri of different issues. So if at any point you want to stop and discuss something or ask a question, feel free to just let me know. So just as a matter of record, I want to let you know that the planning commission reviewed this back in January and moved, made a motion that the council, recommending the council approve this item. The first section is changes that codify existing practices. And within that, right now, when we take in a new case, with, due to new state law, some of the actions that used to be discretionary are now non-discretionary, which means we can't attach conditions of approval. And one of the common conditions of approval that we offered was that a new single-family house needed to underground the utilities. So that electric line that went from a house to a power pole would need to be undergrounded. And that was a standard condition, has been for many years. But since now, some of these applications, we can't condition them. We wanted to codify that practice. The next one is very.
Codify the above ground or the?
So that it remains underground, yeah. Section 14 of the ordinance is very similar, and it again deals with conditions of approval that we commonly put into place. And that condition is when someone does new construction, we would require them to repair or improve the public right away as part of that construction. Because now, some projects are non-discretionary. We want to make sure that we now codify that practice so that staff can require them to repair or, in some cases, improve the public right away. So if it's a new house, sometimes we would require them to put in a sidewalk, if that's what the policy calls for.
Mr. Reimers, a quick question. Don't we require them to pay a deposit or something before they can get a permit?
So sometimes we require a deposit, and sometimes we require them to install the sidewalk. If there's already a line of sidewalks, and this is like a gap in the system, then we require them to install it. If there's no sidewalk on that whole side, in that case, we would require them to provide us a deposit to install a sidewalk nearby.
Thanks.
So they don't have a choice? It's determined by us?
Yes. Yeah, the city council set a policy about five years ago about how we should determine whether it's a deposit or whether it's done on-site, and so now we're instituting that policy.
Okay.
And then the last one in this section is about expanding the allowance of murals to areas designated as open space in the general plan land use diagram. And this coincides with some recent requests we've had to install murals at Live Oak Park and at Primrose Park. So this would allow murals to be installed and would change the sign code to allow murals to be installed in these open space parcels.
I have a question about that. I noticed recently in some parts of this, I guess the back of certain stores along Las Tunas, they have, I guess, decorative art or painting along the walls. Does that fall under like a completely different category? Or is that just something that happened a long time ago, and there was no regulations for it at that time?
Yeah, this is a difficult conversation. What is the difference between a mural and a sign is one of the difficulties we have in defining a sign code. So the short answer would be murals. Murals and painted signs like that are not allowed in the commercial zones anymore. So if it's already been done, they can keep it, they can maintain it. But they are considered signs, and so that they wouldn't be allowed in commercial zones, only in open space areas.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
The following changes are in order to bring our zoning code into conformance with state law. The first one is regarding multifamily uses. So on occasion, we have some multifamily properties that legally reside in areas where they're no longer allowed. And that's called a legally non-conforming use. State law says that if those buildings are legally non-conforming, multifamily properties are involuntarily destroyed, so they're destroyed by accident, that they cannot, that they should be able to rebuild, given the same size and the same number of units. And they have to pull those building permits within two years. So we're revising the legally non-conforming section of the code to comply with that state law, so people can rebuild multifamily units. The second item under this category is regarding family home daycares. So the state passed SB 234, which said that if somebody's doing a family home daycare in a single-family zone, a CUP cannot be required. Now, this has long been the policy or the requirement of the state, except it used to be limited to small family daycare homes. So the state basically expanded that to also include large family daycare homes, which is up to 14 students. So we're just modifying the code to allow someone to do a large family daycare home in the residential zones without a CUP.
So does this limit, then, these family daycares to no more than 14 minors there?
Yes, that's correct. They're allowed to have no more than 14 students.
And can they apply, if they're bigger than that, can they apply for bigger? Is there a process, or is that just it?
I don't happen to know what's in our code right now, but typically, in a residential zone, you can apply for a childcare center, but that would typically require a conditional use permit.
So a childcare center is different from a family daycare?
Yes. Family daycare is meant to be more like an accessory use. So your main use is someone who has a house, and then they happen to do some family daycare at home.
And childcare is obviously.
Is really a commercial use.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Regarding that same topic, I was looking at the actual changes in the code. So it defines large as having seven to 14 minors and small as eight or fewer. So I guess for me, there's a kind of an overlap for seven and eight for the two categories. I guess, does it matter, or is that something we can clarify?
Just trying to find the page really quick.
I think just while Scott's looking, the sort of simple answer is, in the future, it will not matter. In the past, it did. Whether it was six or eight, the lower ones had to be allowed. Once they had their state permit, had to be allowed without any further discretionary permit by the city. The larger ones, we could require the CUP, as Mr. Reimers said. We're getting rid of that CUP requirement for the larger ones. So anything up to 14, the state grants them the permit to do the daycare in their home. We have to let them go. It may be, I'm not positive, but it may be that the smaller number shifted over time between, from six up to eight. I can't completely recall, but I sort of, that's sticking out in my memory from like the 2011 or 12 timeframe. So that might be why there was an inconsistency.
So I guess my question is, would it be for clarity's sake, perhaps, changing or eliminating that number?
Yeah, so what we can do.
Kind of a moot point.
Right. If it's moot, then can we just like remove it?
Yeah.
It's not important.
Yes, we can come back at second reading if the council's comfortable with that, with some proposed change, and just really say it's 14 or less. That was the intent, was to just combine the definition into one definition.
Okay. Yeah, because I guess for the unfamiliar, then, if I see something like that, it almost implies that there is a different process or requirement distinguishing a small and large, when what I'm hearing is there is not, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there any requirements in the code, for example, that they have to have a certain-sized yard to operate? Or, I mean, are there additional requirements to have? Obviously, if you're going to have three, or you're going to have 14, that's a big difference.
So we're not allowed to add any requirements on top of what's already in state law. And child daycare is already highly regulated by the state. There's already requirements about how much open space per child, how much interior space per child.
So that applies to us as well?
There's already those formulas in there, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So the next set of changes is to try and improve consistency within both the zoning code and with the zoning code and other plans, like the specific plan. One of those is that we changed the crossroads specific plan a while back to establish a minimum unit width at 25 feet. And so the recommendation here is to do the same in our commercial zones, to set the same minimum width at 25 feet. The next one is a look at the sign code. In the sign code, we have two competing regulations. One says that all address signs are exempt, and the other one says that only address signs that are less than 12 inches are exempt. So staff's recommendation would be to rely on that second one that says any address sign over 12 inches is going to be considered a sign. Anything less than would be exempt from the sign code. And then the next set is in relation to providing some additional clarity within the code. One of them is regarding alley access. So already in the zoning code, we require non-residential uses, commercial uses, to use the alley. And one of the reasons why is that the more driveways you have on an arterial, for instance, creates more congestion. So we try to put those cars on alleyways. We've had a lot of questions from the public about whether we should be doing the same in residential zones or whether that should also apply in residential zones. One benefit of doing that is that the more people who use an alleyway, the safer the place is, because there's more eyes on the street. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a similar rule in the residential zone that says that if they have access to an alley, the residential property needs to use it if they're doing new construction. If they have existing, they can maintain it. But in some cases, the director can grant relief if it's not physically feasible. The second one is about self-storage facilities. Right now in the city, we do not allow self-storage facilities in any zone. And the way the zoning code works is we make a list of uses that are allowed or conditionally permitted. We don't list every use that's not permitted. So when you look at the land use table, you won't find self-storage. That ends up leading to a lot of questions from self-storage companies who really, really, really want to put in a self-storage facility. So we, over and over again, have to kind of repeat that it's not an allowed use. So it would just make it easier to administer the code if we specifically stated that this use is not allowed, help put that conversation to an end.
And that's a different category than like accessory storage structures on residential properties, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And additionally, if you look at some of the development that we have in our commercial zones, most recently, and driving through there, you'll really see some of the improvements that have happened over the last couple of years, especially during the pandemic. A couple businesses, this is not an endorsement, this is not a promotion, but Fix-It Auto and others around there. And you see some of the changes that are around there, and the compatibility as well to the residential areas has been a significant improvement through that area. And I think, if I recall correctly, one of the discussions regarding self-storage facilities was really about the compatibility between the uses of our industrial areas adjacent to our residential areas. And I mean, I actually drove by it a couple of weeks ago, and I was speaking to Mr. Reimers about it as well. And you really see where you have this kind of, I'm not going to say conflict, but just those uses adjacent to each other. And having a real, almost smooth transition between the two has made a significant difference in that area. So this is kind of one of the things that we've talked about, and that was mentioned during the general plan update as well, that really kind of points to that effort.
The next slide is regarding accessory structures. Right now in the zoning code, we have a number of different points that try and describe, within about four or five different paragraphs, what all the setbacks are. It would just frankly be a lot easier for the public and for staff if it was just set into a table. So that's really what this recommendation is. The one thing that we are clarifying in the code as well is the swimming pool setback. So what we're proposing is a five-foot side yard setback for swimming pools and spas on the street side of a corner lot. It would be 10 feet, and for the rear setback, it would be five feet. And that would conform with almost any other accessory structure.
Why is there an asterisk by garages? On your table?
Yeah, let me double check.
I couldn't hear you, Tom.
I'm sorry. Why is there an asterisk beside the word garages on the table?
Thank you. The asterisk is, it says that that code requirement is not, does not apply to garages when the garage door is perpendicular to the street. So if the garage door is parallel to the street, then you need to set back the garage door 20 feet so that you have room to park a car in front of the garage door. If that garage door is perpendicular to the street, then you don't need as much setback. Thank you.
And just for clarification, street side yard setbacks, that only applies to corner lots?
Right. So on a corner lot, the street side yard setback is usually that longer property line. That would typically be a side yard, except there's a street there instead of another house.
So is that defined by the length or by where the front door is?
It's defined by the street being next to the side property line, rather than another lot.
I guess I meant if you had a corner lot and you had one, one side was longer than the other, but your front door was on the longer side, that would no longer be the.
Yeah, so that gets down to the definition of what's the front property line versus the side property line?
Yeah.
The code defines generally that the front property line is the property line closest to the street and the narrowest property line.
Oh, narrowest, okay. Interesting, all right.
I have a quick question here.
Yeah.
Mr. Reimers, for garages, are these new requirements, or they always been there? Because I thought for one, at one time, I thought the code says for accessory units, accessory structures. Then go for the latter half of the 50% of the law, then go all the way to the back. But are these new requirements?
This was adopted in 2019 with the comprehensive code update, so that's when the code changed. We have run into quite a bit of issues with accessory structures built right next to the property line. It doesn't allow, for instance, for eaves and rain gutters, and it causes quite a bit of neighborhood disputes. So at that point, we had recommended to set that back for five feet. It also provides room to maintain the structure, paint it, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
This next slide is about defining of a day, oh, wait, did that change? Oh, it did, okay. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the next slide. Okay. So this next slide is regarding a mistake that we made, frankly, in the mixed-use zoning district. When we made this table that describes what are the lot coverage requirements, the assumption was that every project built in the mixed-use zone would be a mixed-use project. But in the land use table, we also allow for other uses in that zone. So we also allow for commercial-only projects, in some cases, multifamily. So we also allow for commercial-only projects, in some cases multifamily, and then we also allow single families. So we needed to adopt some lot coverage requirements based on use. And so what we did is, what we're recommending here is, the last three lines of this table, a commercial lot coverage requirement that's based on the commercial zones, the general commercial, and then the multi-family is based on the R3 zone, and the single-family lot coverage requirement would be based on the R1 zone.
So in other words, it just maintains consistency if the land use was something other than mixed use?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is a proposal to adopt a definition for day spas. We've been having some requests from the public on putting in day spas, and the code doesn't define it, and it's kind of, we're seeing a lot more business demand, so we thought it would be helpful to define it. Day spas do require a conditional use permit in the code, and so how we're recommending that we deny it, or, sorry, define it, is that it's a business that offers multiple types of personal service uses, like manicures, pedicures, facials, waxing, skin treatments, and that those are typically done in separate rooms. And the benefit there of having a conditional use permit required is that then we can make sure that what's occurring is not massage therapy, and that they are operating that facility in a way that it's really just personal services that are occurring in that one place.
So if I go to my barber, I can say I'm actually going to a day spa?
If you're getting your services in a private room, yes.
Okay, but that's the distinction.
Ooh.
Okay, well.
So if you go to the barber and you also get a manicure or a pedicure, or some sort of like facial, then yes, you could, and it's in a room, then it could be a day spa.
But they have to have multiple rooms to qualify as a day spa?
Yes.
They just have one big room, that's not a day spa?
Then it's just a barber shop.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Because it seems like a kind of splitting hairs.
Yeah, well, what we're finding is that a lot of businesses are coming in, they're wanting to divide the space, and then the customers want to have multiple services at one time, in a kind of a private atmosphere.
Mr. Remers, could you remind us, what's our regulation on massage therapy? Is that allowed or not allowed? I thought there was a gap that certain ones.
It is allowed with a conditional use permit, but there's certain limitations on the number or the distance between the uses. So that there's, I think it's a 1,500 feet that has to be between one massage business and another massage business.
Additionally, as well, as you may know, as you may remember, our sheriff's department does do background checks as well, and what this provides us, and both for the sheriff's department background investigation, is some pretty clear distinction as to what the service, what the entitlement and the use provides for. So there's not any, there's a little less ambiguity in that process.
How many, do we know how many businesses that we have in the city that do provide massage therapy currently?
It's probably less than six. I think it's only three now.
Okay. I think wasn't there like some state law that at one time that mandated us to allow the use, right?
Yes, yes. At one point, it's state law, we were not allowed to require a CUP, yeah. And then the next one on, for this slide, is also regarding a definition, and this recommendation is to adopt a definition for convenience stores. If you remember, the city council adopted a requirement, an ordinance, that applied to grocery stores. But kind of through that conversation and talk with the city attorney's office, we thought it would be beneficial to help distinguish between a convenience store and a grocery store. And so this would help bring some alignment there. A convenience store would be a retail store, it would be defined as retail, it would serve groceries, food, and dry goods. It could or cannot be with a gasoline sales. But the distinction is that it has to be less than 3,000 square feet. If it's more than 3,000 square feet, then it would be considered a grocery store, and it would have to comply with a grocery store ordinance.
So are grocery stores and convenience stores are also a retail store? Because you have three terms here in this definition. You have a retail store, and you have a convenience store, and then you have a grocery store. So are there three categories?
The reason why we, the reason why we cite retail sales in this definition is that then that pulls in, tells us how to define it in terms of parking. Then we use the parking standard for retail sales. In the grocery store ordinance, I'm not sure how we define the parking off the top of my head, but that's why we classified it here.
What's a 7-Eleven?
Sorry. A 7-Eleven could be a convenience store, yeah.
Not all of it.
Mm-hmm. I think one of the questions that we struggle with is, for instance, like a place like 99 Cent Store, is that a convenience store, or is it a grocery store? And then the more we kind of see these smaller grocery stores, the more we kind of question, is this a grocery store, a convenience store? Should the grocery store ordinance apply or not? And so that's what we're trying to define here.
And if I recall correctly, part of our updates to the grocery store ordinance was there are certain conditions that they would have to meet as part of the, I guess, design and layout. So that would not apply to convenience stores?
That's correct. This next slide is about tandem parking. The code allows for tandem parking in the multifamily zones, but limits that to 30%. But the code doesn't tell us how to count the 30%. So in this next slide, we have an example of tandem parking. So here we have two tandem-parked garages with a vehicle in each, and what we're recommending as a definition is that the front vehicle would be considered the tandem space, and the vehicle behind it that you can access without moving another vehicle would be a non-tandem space. So essentially, in this slide here, 50% of the vehicle parking spaces would be considered tandem. What we need to clarify here is because some people in the public were asking whether this would be 100% tandem. So we wanted to clarify that in this percentage here, it's 50%.
Is this an issue?
Yes. One of the driving factors in housing costs is parking. So if we can provide a little bit of flexibility in how the parking is designed, it really helps with the financial feasibility of a multifamily project.
So in this graph, you have the reason it's non-tandem is because they can just back out.
That's correct.
And then they don't, obviously, the car in the front doesn't have to move.
Yeah.
What?
Is that just new construction?
I think the only benefit would be to new construction, I think.
Like, I have an old house, a single-car garage. Could I add an?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
More space to it and make it a tandem?
The multifamily zone and the mixed-use zones are the only zones that allow for tandem parking. We don't allow for tandem parking in the single-family zone. You can provide tandem parking, but it doesn't count towards your parking requirements. Section 16 is about, property owners have asked if they can subdivide their units, so that, for instance, half the unit faces Las Tunas and the other half of the unit faces the parking. So in this slide here, I'm showing you a map of basically the city's downtown area. And so on occasion, we'll have people come in and say, well, can I divide my unit so that half of it faces Temple City Boulevard or Las Tunas, and that the other half just faces the parking lots in the back? It's our recommendation that we do not allow that type of arrangement. We think from an economic vitality standpoint, it's better to have both units being able to be accessed both from the parking lots and from the arterial street.
I'm trying to think of a lot that would be eligible to be subdivided in that manner.
So a lot of the lots, for instance, along Las Tunas, have access to the parking in the back, and then they have access to Las Tunas. We have had people ask us, can I divide that unit so that there's a back unit that faces the parking lot and a front unit that faces Las Tunas?
Yeah, because I guess I'm thinking that a lot of those lots are already pretty small, so how would they subdivide it? Especially if we have the requirement that they have the 25-foot minimum width.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's possible. There's buildings on those blocks that could want to subdivide that.
Okay, all right.
So basically, they divide that one structure into two, and the back one can only, you can only reach it through the parking lot, and the front one, you can only reach it through the Las Tunas entrance.
Yes.
And we're prohibiting that?
Yes.
Okay. Good idea.
Well, I guess in theory, let's say someone took the 99 Cent Store and tried to cut that in half, right?
Right.
That would be, okay, I see that.
The one thing I didn't present to the council are just blatant errors we made in the code, but I did attach it to your staff report. If you'd like to go through it, I'm more than happy to do that. But they are really not policy changes, they're just errors that we made. With that, that concludes my recommendation, my presentation. Our recommendation tonight is for you to read this by title, waive further reading, and schedule the second hearing for next month, or next meeting, which is May 17th. And then we'll come back with some revised wording on the family daycare issue.
Okay, great. So now it's time for council questions, if there is any, Councilmember Chavez?
No, I don't have any questions. I think we've all been answered so far in the report, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Viscara?
Same.
Okay. Councilmember, you?
Likewise, no questions.
Okay. And same here, I think we all asked you questions during the course of your presentation, so thank you for that. So now I would like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to comment on this matter, now is the time to do so. And we do have a, surely, Mr. Stafford, you wrote it for 8B, but since you're coming up to the podium.
I wanted to ask Scott, where to move or not?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go to the microphone.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Man, council members. I have a question for you, Scott, about the alleys. There's an alley on my street that runs between Nadine and Olive. It's always been blocked. With these changes, will that change the condition to that alley?
I don't believe so. I don't know your specific situation, but we're not proposing to make any physical changes to the alleys.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll go on to final council questions or comments. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you. I just want to thank Scott and the staff and the planning commission for going through all of this. Probably a long time coming. I know you guys put a lot of thought into this, and, you know, it's good to get these things cleaned up at some point, and obviously, time is now. So, good job, and other than that, no further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Nothing further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember, you?
Nothing further either. Thank you for that clean-up language and hard work.
All right. And I concur with my fellow council members, a job well done, we appreciate the hard work. I know going through codes and amendments and ordinances can be a long and sometimes tedious process. We all make mistakes and miss things because it's just so easy. It's almost like going through a dictionary if you don't know where to look. So, yeah, I too appreciate the hard work of Director Remers and all of our planning staff on this effort. With that, may I have a motion for this item?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would move that we introduce for first reading by title only and waive further reading of ordinance number 221060, Series B, co-amendments of the Title IX zoning regulations, Chapter 1, and schedule a second reading of ordinance number 20-1060 for May 17, 2022.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any objections? Seeing none, maybe have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember, you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes. So that passed for zero, and Madam City Clerk, if you could, please read the ordinance.
Thank you. Ordinance number 22-1060, and ordinance of the City Council of City of Temple City, California, amending Title III, Chapter VI, and Title IX, Chapter I of Temple City Municipal Code.
All right, thank you. Next, we move on to item 8B, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 22-1061, related to the maintenance and landscaping of vacant sites. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Man and members of the council. If you recall, it was a virtual meeting, not an in-person meeting. In March, we had a discussion with the council regarding feedback and any thoughts related to proceeding with an ordinance related to vacant properties, and anything that we can add to either mitigate or provide additional enhancements regarding vacant properties in town. So would that, we took some of that direction, and we have before you a draft ordinance for discussion tonight. If there's other direction you'd like to give us as well tonight, and we want to delay this first reading, that is quite all right as well. So with that, Mr. Remers will present what's in the draft ordinance tonight. We'll hear any additional discussion you have. If you're comfortable, that's fine, but if you're not comfortable tonight as well, and would like, we'll look to provide some additional changes or conditions or revisions, no problem either, so.
All right, thank you. Then.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I just want to kind of throw an idea out there for at least the council to consider. I remember this item was brought forth by Mayor Sternquist, and she's not here tonight, and I'm kind of.
With that, sir, just, it's been a while, but a reminder, she will be not participating in these discussions because one of the properties that could be impacted is adjacent, within 500 feet adjacent to one of her properties as well.
Yes, and let me just clarify for the public and for the record. Now Mayor Sternquist brought the item up, wanted us to look into it. As we went through the process, and especially as Mr. Remers went through the process of discussing the theory, it became very evident that the primary property at issue is close to a real property that Mayor Sternquist owns. Once we realized that that property was so important to this ordinance, we discussed the matter with her, and she agreed that she should recuse herself from any further discussion because of the FPPC conflict of interest regulations. So in light of that, if you wish to move forward without her tonight, that's fine. As Mr. Cook said, if there are other issues that you caused delay, that's also fine. This is not an emergency matter, but she won't be participating no matter what due to what we found out during the process.
So she's not going to participate in the entire discussion, even though some of this may not relate directly to her property?
That's correct. In discussing it with her, we reached the conclusion that that was the best course of action for her.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Cook, for that clarification, so. Director Remers?
Yes. So, yes, good evening again. This is ordinance 221061, maintenance and landscaping of vacant sites. So we received some comments from you back in March, and so we've made some changes, and I'll go back through and remind you about what the, or how we've responded to your comments. And then we'll go through some examples about how this ordinance would apply in different situations. So one change was, we received a request to define stockpiling, so we've provided a definition in the ordinance to talk about what stockpiling specifically is. It's more than just a mound of dirt, so we've tried to explain how it differentiates. We also added a five-foot landscape buffer on sites, boundaries that are visible from all public rights of way. So originally, we only required the five-foot landscape buffer on the front property line, and then the request from council was to require it on all boundaries that are visible from the public right of way. We deleted the requirement for a landscape buffer on improved vacant sites, so if there's already a building on the site, they don't need to provide now a landscape buffer additionally. We removed the rule, any rules that were repeated from other sections of the code have been taken out. have been taken out. So, sections that, for instance, didn't, that said you can't have vandalism or graffiti, that was removed. We changed the requirement from a four-foot vinyl fence to a six-foot chain link fence. We changed the ordinance to remove the requirement for a green screen on the chain link fence. There was also a question about, or there was direction from council for staff to define a period, a specific period, when the chain link needs to be replaced with tubular steel, so we're recommending a six-month period there. We deleted a rule requiring property owners to install a fence on all improved vacant properties. So if there is a vacant property that has a structure, they don't have to install a fence in those cases. And then, per the council's direction, we've also recommending to remove or exempt residential properties from the ordinance. So I'll walk you through the, what this all means now on the ground. So this is a property at the corner of Sereno and Rosemead Boulevard, 5300 Rosemead, that's currently vacant. It is improved, meaning there is a building on site, so in that case, they do not need to require, they do not need to install additional landscape buffering, but they do need to install a chain link fence around the site to ensure that it's secure. So here's an example of what it would look like with the additional chain link fence, and then with some hedges out in front. This site here is 5935 Temple City Boulevard, it's at the corner of Rosemead, that should not say Rosemead, gosh, Temple City Boulevard and Woodruff at the southwest corner. In this case, the property, originally, we showed this with just the landscaping along Temple City Boulevard, but the recommended, one of the comments from council was to require landscaping on all sites that are visible from the public right-of-way. So in that case, this site would now have landscaping on the north property line and the east and the west property lines as well. And then the vinyl fence has been replaced with chain link, but that would then be replaced with tubular steel if it continues to be vacant for six months.
Mr. Reimers' question. If they were to just put in tubular steel without going through chain link, that's personally fine, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah. This is 5603 Rosemead Boulevard, this is the former Denny's location. Again, this one was modified to provide some landscape buffering along that south property line, because that would be visible from the public right-of-way. And then the vinyl fence was replaced with chain link. There's already a chain link fence with green screen there, so I couldn't delete it, but that green screen that you're seeing right there would not be required by the code. This is 4301 Temple City Boulevard, it is the last property along Temple City Boulevard on the southern border. It is also vacant, so there, they would need to provide some landscaping up along Temple City Boulevard, and then they would need to ensure that there's a six-foot chain link fence around the entire site. And then lastly, we had some discussion about this site last time as well, 9615 Las Tunas Drive. In this case, I think this is after some discussion, the council direction was, these improved sites don't need to have a vinyl fence as well, and do not, shouldn't be required to have a landscape buffer, so that resulted in the change to the rules for improved sites. So in this case, no changes would be required. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Director Reimers. So now on to council questions, this time we'll start with Councilmember you.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
As coincidence would have it, somebody was talking, we were, I was in a meeting with some other folks, and they were all talking about the Alpha Beta site, and somebody came up with the idea of approaching the owners to see if we could have a city garden or something like that. Is that feasible or viable? Put it to some productive use, using, well, you wouldn't, it's full of concrete, but you could use wooden boxes and that kind of thing, that's what people were suggesting. So I'll just throw that out there.
I can't think of anything in the code that would preclude it. It would require their permission and granting of approval of it, you know?
Wouldn't we be pushing the definition of, I remember the requirements of open space, and once you start, let's say, turning something into something like park-like, you may run into a problem if you want to do something on that later on?
Yeah.
I'm thinking that, I'm not sure, I could defer to our city attorney, but you might be pushing the envelope a little bit on that.
It's possible, but if we started by entering into a lease for it, it would be, it would certainly be something we'd want to look at before we got there. I'm thinking Pasadena has one on the north frontage road of the 210 freeway, approximately Los Robles, but I'm not sure it's Los Robles, but it's in that general area. The Waverly School has one along Pasadena Avenue between, well, just south of California, but that is private leasing from Caltrans, so...
I guess the difference would be then that it's private land...
Right.
Rather than public.
But the only reason I brought that one up was that it's a private lease of a Caltrans property, so there are some, I believe the fact that its lease is involved, and it's not intended to be the permanent use even for, you know, permanent until we change, it's a lease with a designated end time. I believe that changes the calculus, but if we do get direction to go look at that, obviously, we'd be sure that we structured it correctly.
And what is the usage in the ones you were talking about?
One is a community garden where the, community members have vegetable plots and that sort of thing. The other one is actually the same, but it's operated by a private school for their students.
I think that, while those ideas are great, but it's going to present some challenges for the owner, not us, who in the future, if they were to propose a development, it's kind of like Councilmember Chavez saying, they will have the proof, they will have the duty when they do their CQ analysis, they're going to have some challenges because they're taking away certain things, and open space, like Councilmember Chavez was saying, that the public's enjoying, and now what did they do to replace that?
Councilmember Viscara, any further questions?
No, I'll leave that alone for now.
All right.
Good idea.
Councilmember Chavez, any questions?
Kind of related to Councilmember Viscara's point, and not so much a question, but maybe a comment, and that is, my only concern with all this, and I totally agree with the fact that increasing the looks, these landscape features, all that kind of stuff, is better than nothing, but my question is, if we make it look too good, then where's the incentive to improve this property at some point? It kind of goes away. For example, with the Alpha Beta lot, if we put something there that makes it look nice and everybody drives by, then we don't, we lose, I mean, we've been trying to get something in there permanently for how long now?
Many years.
And the incentive to move forward on that is going to be even less, because people are saying, oh, that's pretty nice, let's just leave it as is, you know, and, I don't know, just, but again, I don't disagree, and I completely agree with the things that we're talking about here today, but I'm just hoping it doesn't lead to further delay and eventually improving these lots that will perhaps help the city in other ways, perhaps, from a commercial and from a housing standpoint as well.
But like you said, how many years has it been?
Yeah, it's been a long time. But, you know, especially, you know, the Alpha Beta lot is a good example, at least we have a park next to it now, and, you know, so, we'll get there. Thank you, that's...
Great. All right, I do have one question. If we use the old Denny's site as an example, so that's a vacant property within, sort of like an improved parking lot site, so in order for them to meet the requirements of this, they would actually have to physically dig out portions of that parking lot and plant vegetation to create that landscape buffer, or can someone put a series of, say, potted plants that create a wall?
Or boxes?
Or, yeah, or box, that's actually a better one, yeah.
It's a good question. In the case of the Denny's site, that property is actually, is bare dirt, so they can go ahead and landscape that in that space.
But let's say it wasn't bare dirt.
Let me see how the code is worded exactly.
Well, and I agree with that point, I don't know that we would want them necessarily to have to go in there and start digging up the concrete, maybe an alternate would be to allow them to put boxes, and it would serve the same purpose, you know, you can put a planter box in there with a nice brush or anything, that basically be accomplishing what we're trying to do here, I think, as well. Maybe allow some discretion to do that.
Yeah, and thank you, that's kind of trying to see if there's some flexibility to accomplish the same goals.
The way it's worded now, it wouldn't preclude that, but if the council wants, as part of its motion, they could ask us to come back at second reading, and we can add that in to the ordinance.
Okay. Well, perhaps sometimes having some clarity could be beneficial, instead of being vague?
Well, we don't preclude it, you know, if you think, sorry, bring planter boxes, irrigated planter boxes.
Okay. All right, well, as long as that's the understanding, so, okay. All right, that's all the questions I have, so now I'd like to open the public hearing for anyone who would like to comment, and we do have one comment form from Mr. Steve Stafford.
Steve, it looks like you're making up for the loss of the last two years tonight, huh? It's good to have you back.
Mayor Protemper, man, council members, city staff, one of the things about this, having the fences, is that these businesses, I'd like the city to get a hold of the owners and go to the Sheriff's Department and get power of attorney forms on file, so if homeless people do climb over those fences, the deputies have recourse. This has been a big problem, having those fences up. It's the worst thing for the homeless, because they'll figure a way in, I've seen it too many times, and I really think this should be adopted to include residents, there's a lot of residents' houses in this city that are vacant, and that have been vacant a long time, and the homeless get into there. One example is where they have a fences across from Ralph's on Cloverly, right there south of Las Tunas, and I don't know why we're exempting residential structures, but I think it should be included, and again, that the owners should get a power of attorney form on file at the Sheriff's Department, so they have recourse and they have a contact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to final council questions or comments. Councilmember, you?
No further questions, I think it's a great ordinance, very timely, and I know it's a little burdensome for some of the developers, but I think they do need some incentive to develop their property, I think this provides that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
Move further, Congress.
Councilmember Chavez?
No, and I agree with Councilmember you, again, I talked earlier about the incentive not to improve, but obviously, once faced with some of these things, maybe they'll cause the opposite effect and give the incentive to do something, because as we know, we have a lot of, not a lot, but we have a few lots that have been sitting there for quite a long time. No, nothing else? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and I agree, I think this is necessary, and I appreciate the work and the discussion to get to the point we are now. I guess, if I may suggest to council, since Councilmember Viscara brought up the idea of, I guess, different uses for, I guess, that specific property, or anything equivalent to that, perhaps, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cook, if that's something you can look into on behalf of council, to see if there's any traction that we can kind of gain from pursuing something like that?
Certainly, sir.
And maybe you can report back to us at a later date, if that's okay with...
What was that, again?
When Councilmember Viscara talked about the community garden idea, sort of the use of private spaces for public uses, so I think it's an intriguing idea, and perhaps if there's some avenue or channel to it, I think that would be different from the agenda item we have on hand today, so it would have to be a separate discussion, but perhaps the first thing is just whether or not it's even warranted, you can maybe let us know.
Will do, sir.
Okay. All right, having said that, may we have a motion for this item?
Mayor Protem, I'm prepared to make a motion, however, just one quick question. So the last point that came up regarding the discretion to not require the landowners to actually dig up the cement, are we going to, we're not doing that, that, we're comfortable with the fact that it doesn't say they have to do that.
Correct.
They can do that, or they can put up other things that, okay, all right, all right, I just want to make sure that's in there. All right, well then I would make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 22-1061 for first reading by title only, amending Title IV, Chapter II of the Temple City Municipal Code to provide for regulations pertaining to the maintenance and landscaping of vacant properties, and that we waive further reading of ordinance number 22-1061, and schedule the second reading of the ordinance for May 17, 2022. Sir?
All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's no objections, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember, you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, man?
Yes. And Madam City Clerk, if you could please read the ordinance title?
Ordinance number 22-1061, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temple City, California, amending Title IV, Chapter II of the Temple City Municipal Code to provide for regulations pertaining to the maintenance and landscaping of vacant sites.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, unfinished business, none. Next, we have 10A new business, review of city council ad hoc and standing committees, and in, similar to the reason why we pulled Agenda Item 7B, I would recommend to council that we table this matter until Mayor Sternquist returns, since that is the mayor's duty to review and appoint this, unless there's any objections?
No objection.
Okay. Do we need a motion to continue this, or, no? Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 11, update from our city manager, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and members of the council, just two items for tonight. At the last meeting, which I was dutifully quarantining myself, the city attorney did mention some of the issues that the state of California is bringing up, related to housing laws, and some of the issues with some of the most recent regulation. I'd just like to thank our community development director, Scott Reimers, who's really done an excellent job in presenting the council with the policy options, and which we will be discussing even further going down the road, but really setting a template, following your direction, but also being, abiding by state law, but being creative in a way to do it. So I think he is, from staff levels, really put us on a good footing as we move forward under the changing landscape of what is happening, and particularly with the state of California using more of its authority upon municipalities. So, thank you for, just thank him for setting the stage for us to be on legally sound footing, but also from a policy direction that you gave us, implementing that policy direction in a very thoughtful, creative, and manner that really meets the consistency of what we spent many years for with, in working and updating the general plan and the zoning code. Secondly, the other item I wanted to bring up is, for all of you who know, that on April 16th, the Metropolitan Water District, which is essentially... um, on April sixteenth, the Metropolitan Water District, which is essentially, uh, the entity that buys water for all the municipal water provi- um, uh, agencies, wholesalers, including, in our case, the Upper San Gabriel Water District, um, set some very specific guidelines. Um, we did get correspondence, and I received correspondence yesterday, city managers in the region, which I did forward to all the council members, in the Upper San Gabriel Valley District's response to Metropolitan Water District's response. Um, it is a bit ambiguous, the response from the Upper San Gabriel Water District. We did reach out to all of our water purveyors, all of our water providers, including, uh, American Water, which now, uh, which merged or bought the mu- the mutual water district, East Pasadena Water District, uh, Golden State Water, um, the other mutual, which is, uh, San Gabriel Wa- County Water District, and, um, and the other mutual, which is, uh, Se- Sunny Slope. And most of them, at this point in time, are following a two-day-a-week watering requirement that they will be communicating with their customers. Um, again, the Upper San Gabriel Water District did not specify and set essentially that needs to meet targets that the state water master has dictated through MET, um, but did not dictate how, what specific measures each, um, water district should be providing, and then dicta- dictating down to the providers, then dictating down to the customers. So, it is a little bit ambiguous right now, but most of our local water agents, our, our local water providers are in what they're calling a level-two water restriction level, which would be two days a week of watering, and not wa- and not watering any lawns within, uh, twenty, uh, forty-eight hours after rainfall. So, this is an evolving, uh, process. We will be sending through our social media and other medians, uh, other, uh, other avenues, uh, print and otherwise, our, um, conservation efforts. Uh, we went through this about, almost about seven years ago now, so we will do that as well, and as this situation evolves, we will make sure to inform the council, then inform the community. If you have any questions, I will try to answer any of them.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Was there a timing requirement? Twice, twice a week, but for five minutes or for half an hour?
There is no timing requirement that I'm, um, that's been dictated by the water purveyors.
Mayor Protem, a question. So I guess, uh, there's no, uh, clarity on enforcement either, right? I mean, it is, the water company enforcing it, and the city is not part of enforcing.
Thank you, uh, council member you. That's, that is correct, and when we had the last water crisis, we had that conversation with all the water providers as well. Um, it was a little bit ambiguous as to the authority that, because if we owned a utility, it would be, if we, we were that water utility like several other agencies in the San Gabriel Valley, it'd be pretty clear what our obligations were, and, um, but in this case, it's a little bit more ambiguous because state law related to water rights and usage of water, um, flows a bit differently. So it's, um, uh, it, we did, during the last severe water restriction requirements, we did not, as an agency, um, essentially enforce that through any punitive meas- measures in our municipal code. Um, again, we'll see how this evolves, and we'll make sure to continue to update the council accordingly.
I have a question.
Sure.
You know, it, it's just like, we've seen this before. It, it appears to me, and it's real frustrating for me on the, on the lack of clarity, as you mentioned, but I think, it appears to me that they're still relying on people to voluntarily comply with some of these things, but then they don't tell us really what they want us to comply with, as, as council member Viscara indicated. Well, okay, we can, we can, uh, water twice a week, but can we do it for five hours each day, or, you know, ten minutes? You know, it'd be nice to know some of those things. Um, the question I have, and I don't know if you have the answer, do, I know, I think we have five water providers in the city, don't we?
One consolidated because, uh, East Pasadena Water was bought out by, uh, American Water.
Okay, and that was the smallest one, so-
That was the smaller one.
So we basically have four now. Do they, do they have different access to amounts of water? Do they all get it from the same place, or does, like, let's say, I'm with Golden State, do they have more water than, than metro, than, than Sunny Slope does, or do they have access to more water so that those customers, for example, could use more water than, than another part of the city?
Kind of going back a little bit, but, um, the water rights that each individual, either mutual or private company have, can differ. There, the Upper San Gabriel Water District regulates essentially the amount of, uh, groundwater there must be in the aquifers for each of those entities, depending on where they buy their water and what level, what kind of water rights that they have. So there, that's what this is essentially ensuring, because the San Gabriel Valley is primarily groundwater, right? So, there, then the aquifers must stay at a certain level. That's one of the responsibilities of the Upper San Gabriel Water District, is to ensure that those aquifers stay at a certain level. So, they're making sure that, you know, if there's enough rainwater during a timeframe, then whatever water rights those either private or mutuals have, that's what they have, but they know what's in the ground, how much they, how much they can provide at any given time. What this, the way I'm reading this, and I'm not a water expert, what a way I'm reading this is that they want to ensure from a water replenishment standpoint, for right now, that they had, that, that METS told them, this is how much you're gonna get, this is how much you have to conserve, because this is all we're going to allocate to you to ensure the preservation of your existing water rights. That's my general understanding.
Well, and the bottom line of all this is very, and I know, I know Greg can appreciate this in law school, the water rights and, and the long history in California of water rights and fights and battles, and it, it's still a complex area, and, you know, we always hoped that there would not be a water rights question on the bar exam, because nobody would know how to answer it, of course, but it's just, uh, and it has got, has not really gotten any better, and of course, the drought doesn't help, but, uh, I, I know, and you mentioned earlier, and I think it's a great idea, that we take, uh, more of a lead in this area and get back to the, some of the things we were doing before, dust off some of that stuff that we have about reminding our residents to, to use less water, and if I remember correctly, we did a pretty good job, uh, in the city about that, and, and there's no reason why we can't do it again, but obviously we need to bring it to the attention, because when you pick up the newspaper or you read things, it's all over the place. Nobody knows what's going on at this point, so. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
And, and speaking of that, I, I remember during, during the last go-around, we actually created yard signs, and I, I know how you feel about yard signs.
No, I, I don't mind yard-
But, um, but we had those yard signs about conserving water. I believe we did that, right?
We sure did, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah, so I, I think that, that messaging is important, 'cause, um, like, it just, you know, speak of, speaking of messaging, I, I actually got a robo-call today from my utility about this.
From who?
From, from Sunny Slope.
Oh.
Yeah, about this. Uh, I mean, usually I expect it to be the fake Chinese consulate asking for my, you know, passport and other stuff, but it was actually from, from Sunny Slope, talking specifically about the, the two-day conservation. So, they're already starting that messaging, but how many of you actually pick up robo-calls, right? So, yeah, I, I think it'd be interesting to see what we, we can do on our end.
And it's just not about watering the lawn. I mean, we were talking about flushing the toilet less, I mean, you know, people, if I remember, we were putting buckets in the, in the showers to use in the garden, things like that. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways that you can conserve, and unfortunately, we're looking at it again. I mean, uh-
Weren't there incentives for people who would tear up their lawns and put in drought-resistant plants and things like that?
Yeah, I think we did. But, yeah, and that brings up a good point. I, for one, would like to see some of these water companies, or even a representative from the Upper San Gabriel Valley, to come and kind of talk to us and, and bring out that stuff again, and what we can do to, because I know they took a lead, uh, about, uh, how to do certain things and, and helping the city, and, you know, maybe, maybe we're just, because we're just getting started, maybe they're, they're gonna roll that out again, but, you know, rather than listening to them during election times only, it'd be nice to hear them, uh, during these times of, of-
You know who's an excellent source is Dan Oregi.
Dan Oregi is a very good source, but is he still around?
Yeah, he's still around.
I haven't seen him for, no, I mean, I know he's still around, but I don't know if he's, I know he travels a lot now and stuff, but we need to, yeah, he'd be a good source, but, you know, we need to hear from the experts, because none of us are experts. It'd be nice to hear from them. Maybe we can reach out.
And I think to council member Viscara's point, um, I think the Upper San Gabriel Water District at some point offered either grants or subsidies for ripping out your lawn and putting in drought-tolerant-
I don't remember who did it, but I know it was done.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's still an active program. I, I know-
We did some of it at City Hall.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in front of City Hall, we, that was funded through, through them, right?
Correct.
So, okay. Well, I think it'll be interesting if we could reach out and, and see-
Will do.
What's available.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, thank you, Mayor Protem.
All right. All right, update from our city attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Nothing substantive tonight, just happy to say that the League of California Cities is having its city attorney conference for the first time in three years, uh, tomorrow through Friday, so at your next meeting, I will have some substantive things. Maybe not so much a legislative update or anything on that line, but just the kind of learning that you do when you're around people in the same, same role. So, looking forward to that, looking forward to bringing back ideas from Mr. Cook and for the five of you. Thank you.
There's a lot of lawyers in one place. Man, I'll tell ya. How long is that, uh, at Thompson's?
Now, this is, uh, two and a half days.
Wow, good, good.
Well, we are due for a large earthquake, right, Mr. Murphy?
Oh, no, no. Actually, I'm gonna talk about that, too.
All right. Anyway, um, next, uh, we have council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports?
No reports.
No reports, all right. All right, moving on to council items separate from the regular agenda, uh, starting with council member Chavez.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. Um, kind of follow up on this, uh, earthquake discussion a little bit that we got involved in. Uh, as you know, uh, I sit on the executive committee, uh, for the JPIA, and this past week, we had our annual workshop, and at that workshop, we usually get updates from staff about different things that JPIA is doing or has in the works, and of course, discuss policies moving on in the future. One of the things that I would like to share with our city is that last year, JPIA started a program with a company called Safe Hub. Uh, I don't know if any of you have heard of them, and what they've basically done is they've installed sensors in buildings amongst members of the JPIA. Uh, sensors that will register when an earthquake does happen, and of course, we know that we're always having earthquakes, um, but the importance of it is that these sensors will basically keep track of the earthquakes and also notify that member agency if the building in which the sensor was located has been compromised in any way, uh, and something that you would want to take a look at. Obviously, if it falls to the ground, falls to the ground, but this is things that perhaps we can use to, uh, get ahead of that. And so, that has been a pretty good program, and it's been at the total cost of JPIA. Well, I just found out this weekend, or that last week, that Temple City is going to actually be getting eight of these sensors to put on our buildings in the city, and I, I don't know, Brian, they probably haven't contacted you yet, have they?
Not formally, no, sir.
So, but, but we will be getting some of those, and, uh, that will be placed at, uh, certain facilities. Uh, they're looking like, for example, Live Oak City Hall, uh, certain buildings in the city, and, uh, and at, at no cost, and so, um, it's something that we're hoping that will continue and, again, allow us to track these and, and keep our buildings safe in, in our city. So, so good program.
Are, are these only for city buildings?
Um, yeah, so far, they're only for city buildings, not, not residential.
Okay, so they, they couldn't put it, like, at the schools or anything either?
Um, that's a good question. I'm not sure. Some of them may be at the schools, but at this point, I think because of the limitation, we have enough in the city to, to take that, but I'll, I'll check on that, and maybe we can work with the school, and maybe, uh, you know, I don't know that we can get them at every school. But now, it will be available eventually to anybody who wants it.
I see.
But of course, at a cost, and, and we're trying to work that out, and we're probably going to be able to do that and get them a better cost than what they normally would, would do, so. So, good program. Um, little update on the property program. As you know, we can, we maintain property insurance on all of our, our properties as well, uh, and I think I've mentioned before that, over the past few years, because of a lot of the things that happened in California, it's been difficult to write policies, different policies, including the property program, as Brian knows, and the contributions from the members unfortunately have gone up, but, and they will go up a little bit this year, but not as much as they would have, because as I mentioned before, the JPIA has established a new company, which we call a captive company that is based in Utah, that has basically taken some of the costs, and we've been able to lower some of the premium. So, more to follow, because I'll be going to a, a conference on that at the end of the month in Utah. We actually have to meet once a year in Utah for that, but, you know, I guess Salt Lake City, I haven't been to Salt Lake City in a long time, so we'll see. Um, and last thing, uh, last thing, we, we went over the numbers as far as the liability claims and the workers' compensation claims of all our member cities and agencies. I'm glad to report that, in the last ten years, Temple City has had only a hundred and fifty liability claims. Now, that may or may not sound like a lot, that's an average of about fifteen liability claims per year, but I can tell you that we're on the lower end of the spectrum of all our members. I mean, we have some members who have had over a thousand, uh, or thousands of liability claims, so. So, we're doing a pretty good job in, in that regard. As far as the workers' comp, same thing. We've had a total of seventy-six workers' comp claims over the last ten years. Um, oh, I forgot to give you a total, but for a total of, uh, payouts of almost seven hundred thousand on the workers' comp, and a little over a million dollars on the li- liability claim. So, again, relatively to all the other members, we're doing a really good job, and it's always nice when I see those numbers, 'cause I see them for all the cities, and of course, the first one I look for is Temple City, to see where we're at, and, uh, it's nice to see that, that we're doing a pretty good job. And so that, obviously, hats off to, uh, to Brian and his staff for, for following up on those things, and, and we do a pretty good job of risk management within the city, you know, following the advice, of course, of the JPIA, so. Uh, I think that's it for me, and I look forward to, uh, well, oh, we haven't had a, did we have a meeting since the park opened? No. So, again, uh, Adam, Adam left. He was here, but he left, but, it was a great opening, obviously, we were all there, and, uh, wow, I, I still get compliments. In fact, I have clients who come in that don't live in Temple City, and they've driven by, and they say, "Do you guys have a new park?" And I said, "Yeah," I said, "Wow, it looks great," you know, 'cause you can really see it from the ci- the street, so, yeah.
I went to the restaurant across the street from there tonight, before I came here.
Mm-hmm.
It was packed.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's been used. A lot of, a lot of people use it, so. Good, thank you.
All right, thanks. Uh, council member Viscara?
I really don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Council member you?
Uh, nothing to add, thank you.
All right, and, uh, just a few quick things here, um, just to build on, uh, council member Chavez. Yeah, the grand opening for Permost Park was, was phenomenal. There, I wasn't expecting that many people. Um, I think Adam estimated, what, over two hundred?
Over three hundred?
Three hundred? Was it three hundred? Okay, yeah, I, I knew there was a lot, but I, I didn't know that there were that many, so. So, no, that was, that was fantastic. Um, I want to thank all of our, uh, state, federal, and local-level dignitaries who attended and, and helped us with the, uh, the ribbon cutting, and, and also all the residents who, uh, came out and made it such a fantastic event for something we consider to be a, a great historical milestone in Temple City, so, so that, that was fantastic. And, and also, um, I've brought my kids there in the subsequent weekends, and it's always, there's always people, always people, so that, that's, that's always a great sign. Uh, next, I do want to congratulate the, uh, Camellia Festival on the, the coronation, um, and also, like, Don Taran keeps reminding everyone, "The festival isn't May, the festival isn't May," so, um, we're looking forward to that. I know we have one more meeting before that. Next, I do want to also give a shout-out to, um, Pop Rock Academy on their grand opening. Uh, they're actually just a block away from City Hall, so I, I joined some, um, as the chamber liaison, I- So I joined some, as the chamber liaison, I also joined some of our other chamber members to participate. They do a lot of training and classes for kids that are interested in performing arts, acting, all sorts of things on the creative side. And an interesting factoid is one of their students, who was actually emceeing the grand opening, her name is Reagan Toh, she was the voiceover for The Squid Games on Netflix.
The what?
There's a popular TV show called Squid Games, that's actually a Korean drama, but she did the English dub for, if you've watched it, there's a big robot that talks, and so she was the voiceover.
You can tell which council member has young kids.
Well, the irony is, actually, that show is not really appropriate for young children, so that was actually a question I asked her parents, was the sheet?
Was it called Squid?
Squid Games?
Squid Game, oh, that's right, I think I did, I've heard of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
I think Mr. Cook may have, may be familiar with that.
Yes, I've seen it as well. Pretty frightening.
But anyway, that's a shout out to Pop Rock. I think one of the comments that I heard was, at least in the San Gabriel Valley community, there hasn't really been a business like that, that really caters towards the demographics of our residents in this area. And so it's great to have the owner who's familiar with that bring his talents, his name is Paul Quo, bring his talents here. So I want to just congratulate them on the grand opening. And do we have, is the soft opening for the library, has that been set yet, or is that something to be determined still?
We were just nailing down everybody's schedule today, we should be announcing that to the public, hopefully, within the next 24 to 48 hours.
Okay, all right, so everyone who's interested in that, keep an eye out for that. And last, but not least, I know Mother's Day is coming up, I believe it's this weekend. So to all the mothers out there, happy early Mother's Day from the City Council. And that's all the comments I have.
Just make one last comment.
Yes, of course.
I forgot to mention, those, those of you, of course, we always talk about all these events and how great they are, just want to remind everybody that if you were not able to attend, Mr. Jambezian has all of these photos on templecityphotos.com, right, doesn't he? And if you want to see the photos, they're great, and of course, that goes for any event that's in the city. And so I would recommend that you log in there and check it out. So thank you, Jerry, for always being there for us.
Yes, likewise. I did see all your photos from Primrose, and it's amazing how the colors pop even in the photos, so thanks for capturing that for us. All right, next, we'll move on, we'll recess to the successor agency, to the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Agency member Chavez?
Here.
Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Agency member Yu?
Here.
Vice Chair Man?
Here.
Chair Sternquist is absent.
Move to excuse Chair Sternquist, what counts.
Sir.
All right, we've, Chair Sternquist is excused. If there's no objections, we'll move forward. Next is consent calendar item, may be approved in a single motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, can we get a roll call, please?
Agency member Chavez?
Yes.
Agency member Viscara?
Yes.
Agency member Yu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Man?
Yes. So the consent calendar has been approved. Next, unfinished business, none, new business, none, communications, none. Public comments, does anyone want to comment on the successor agency? I don't think we ever had one, huh? We'll close public comments. Next, update from Executive Director and Agency Counsel.
None today, sir.
All right. Matters from Agency Members?
Nothing.
None, okay. And then now, we adjourned the successor agency meeting, and we are back to the regular council meeting. And now we're at additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the council at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comments, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.